Well, Seth.
Good evening, everyone. It's July 14th, 2020, and this is a workshop of the Oyster River Community School Board. The school board, when it's in a workshop, is not in its decision-making boat. There is no motions being made tonight and no decisions being made tonight. In a workshop, the goal is to keep the board abreast of developments and to answer their questions. So, in that light, let me just open the meeting. My name is James Morse, and I'm the superintendent of schools. Today, in this meeting, this is the first time that we've actually tried meeting as a body since March 13th. Pretty exciting time for us. I actually put on a tie and dress pants and shirt, and that's the hallmark of my day. In the room this evening, we have, obviously, the school board. We also have the SAU administrators. We have building-level administrators, and we have the directors in the district. We also have our union president available to answer questions by telephone. So, all of us have been heavily involved in trying to figure out the opening of school this fall, literally since before the last school year ended. We started with a community survey. The community was amazing in responding to the survey. Forty percent of our parents responded, forty-five percent of our students responded, grades five through 12, and ninety percent of our teachers and support staff responded. It was a closed-option survey, but also included an open response. There were so many responses that it was incredibly helpful in terms of, you know, how we did during that 13 weeks of remote learning and ways we could improve the system. We immediately went into a two-day workshop with the school system in Portsmouth to share ideas and directions right after school got out. And then we proceeded to build our own structure for doing this work. So, the SAU administrators acted as a governance committee. Then each building had a committee, and then the operations piece, as appropriate, blended into the other committees. Once we did that, we just wrote every question we could possibly think of that would -- that came to our heads. We had over 60 staff participating, and we really filled reams and reams of paper. We took the community survey and the questions we had, and we broke them down into a format where we would look at a traditional return to school because there are some unique aspects if the board chooses for the students to come back en masse in the fall. There's some unique aspects we have to address. We also wanted to improve upon the remote learning experience. We might all remember that the school system had exactly three days to prepare for a remote learning experience that it had never done before. And we learned a lot from that experience, specifically from the survey, and ways that we could improve if we have to go back into remote learning. And then, depending on the circumstance, we really felt like we had to look at a hybrid model, something where we mix in-school with students and remote learning. And that became a big discussion, largely because what does hybrid mean, you know? And we went through various iterations of what does that mean. And tonight, as we go through this work with the school board, the principals are starting to get on a path that they'll test with the board, and the board will be able to ask questions across all of these areas. So, the PowerPoint that I used with the board last week was used as a superintendent's newsletter on Friday that went out across the community. So, that's the basis of our conversation this evening, and the school board will be able to ask anyone in the room and any question that they have for clarity, for direction, for ideas that we may not have thought of. But I would be remiss if I didn't just take the next 30 seconds to say thank you. We still have a lot of work in front of us. These next three weeks are going to be intense. The last six weeks have been intense. And ultimately, you know, the board and the school system really wants to accomplish three things. One, we want to make sure our children are safe. They're precious to us. We want to take care of them. We want to make sure our faculty and staff are safe. They're precious to us, and we want to take care of them. And we want to make sure that the program we put in place, whether it's the traditional opening of school, or whether it's totally remote, or whether it's a hybrid, adjusts for what we find we need to do in bringing our children back. Probably the most important piece is not jumping right into the academics, but dealing with the social, emotional, and mental health issues as we open school. This has been a traumatic experience for 2,200 children. It's been a traumatic experience for all of our parents and guardians. It's been a traumatic experience for our faculty and staff. So, given that, what I talked to the chair about is having presentations done by each of the units because that's how we built this plan. And then we're going to invite the elementary, Misty and David Goldsmith up first, but before I do, just turn it over to the chair and see if he has any additional comments he wants to make.
Just a couple, Jim. Thank you. First, I'd like to compliment the administrators and everybody involved in creating this incredibly detailed opening plan with three options, and just it seemed like every possible contingency question was just dealt with in this. And I know that just the enormous amount of work that went into that, and I think it puts us in a good position. So, I want to like thank you for doing that. And I also wanted to say that, as a workshop, we don't have public comment. That's not part of a workshop. But we do invite letters. We've gotten a number of them so far. Thoughtful, reasoned, just, I mean, there's really great letters from the Durham community, and I just hope that people can, if they pay, follow this workshop, you know, and other questions arise, or concerns, or positions they want to put forward to the board. That any letter to Dr. Morris will generally go to the entire board, so we all see them, we all read them. And so, that's a way of having input to us. So, invite parents and community members to continue to write to us and voice their opinion on this absolutely crucial issue. So, that's what I have to say. So, we start with the elementary principals.
I'd invite David and Misty to the podium. Just want to remind everyone that through our masks, we really need to project in order for the community to hear, in order for it to be recorded properly.
Alexander. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I'm David Goldsmith, the principal of Moheramet.
Good evening. Misty Lowe from Mastway.
We had basically one goal as we were thinking about all the different models that we could have in the elementary schools, and that's to get our kids in school as much as possible. And we have to balance that with their health and safety and our staff's health and safety. The benefit of kids being in school, of course, is really is equity. We get to control the learning environment. We get to control the technology. We get to control the supports. There are mental health supports, the instruction that we can give them, and then the services that we provide to students. And we can assess students in person, and we can tailor instruction for them. So, you saw on the grid, we have the model of what a whole in-school, everybody in-school model. We have the column about hybrid, and we have the column about remote. So, we have been plugging away for hours this whole summer, both the Mastway transition team and the Moheramet transition team, with representatives across all of the different disciplines, to look at, could we possibly do those things? And we've come up with some models that could potentially do that. And we have pros and cons for all of them that we'll explain to you. This is what it would look like if we brought all the kids back to school. We can't put all of our students into a classroom at Moheramet. We have less than 600 usable square feet in a classroom, and so, for social distancing, we have to split our kids into two groups. And so, we have 16 classes. That's 32 spaces. I'm not going to get into all the details with you, and Misty and I won't do that with all the planning, but you can see where we start to have to make these decisions. We can find all these spaces in the building, and we can say, in the morning, half of you are with the teacher, and in the afternoon, half of you are -- and in the morning, the other half of you are in the space. And then we can swap. So, it's sort of like in-class school for half the day and remote learning for half the day. You're just in the building.
David, would you mind repeating? There was some kind of noise in the background.
I wonder if you talk into the mic, too, how that's --
Oh, sure. Is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry? Okay. So, we're just saying, to have everybody in school, basically, we would have to split the kids up into two groups. They'd be with their teacher for half the day, and they'd be in another space in some sort of pod the other half of the day. We would then need to have staff with those pods and figure out the schedule for all of Here's a potential way that could look. The pro for bringing everyone into the building is that they're all in the building. If we're able to get kids out of their house, they're in school. Families who need to work can do that. The cons are really pretty drastic. We use all of our spaces. Kids can't move around at all. We have a very tough time staffing this model. Social distancing is really challenging. If you can imagine Moheramet, the West Wing, imagine having two half-groups in there, so 20 students in the West Wing. Even if we can do it by space, it's just one big area. So, it's all the same air, et cetera. So, we have been looking to see if we could physically do it, and then we have to think about what the actuality of doing that is for our students. At Mastway, the staff doesn't exist right now to do that. So, we'd have to reassign staff, pull people from other places, change their roles to do that. You want to talk about this one?
This model is a half-day, where we would have part of our students in the morning. Transportation would take the other students -- let me start over, sorry. Half your kids in the morning, half your kids in the afternoon. And the midday would be transportation, taking kiddos home and bringing students back. This is an excellent option when you're looking at the challenges that we faced with staffing and space. This is not as excellent as an option. Do I do enter or the arrow? Sorry, David. That's not going to the next -- it's not going to the schedule with the pro-cons. Here we go. So, looking at the pros and cons of this model, yes, all the students would be in school every day and get to have FaceTime with their teacher, which is really optimal, but they wouldn't be there full day. So, we would need to make -- we would need to do some discussion around what are we able to cover in a half-day curriculum-wise, assessment-wise. But the pro is that they're in their classrooms, they're with their teachers for a matter of half a day every day. So, that would really help with the challenges that we're facing with staff and space. We do worry about the community and families who are trying to go back to work and what a half-day, how the half-day could impact. So, that is one of our cons. The students could be learning remotely the other half of the day. That's a con and a pro, really, because if we have to pivot at any point to go remote again, then the students are at least actively utilizing a lot of those online platforms that we would be using. So, that would be helpful. But again, it wouldn't be FaceTime all day.
This is an appropriate place to ask a question.
Do you want to ask questions as we go through, Tom? Do you want to go ask questions as we go through? Might be appropriate if we're getting segments.
Sure, sure.
I just have one, actually. So, in this Model 2, is one hour enough time? Because you're going to have to clean all the classrooms out between the transition, between them coming. Is there enough time to do it?
This is just sort of a sample framework. I think we would need to get to the nitty-gritty of the schedule. I don't think an hour would be enough. Our hope is that in that middle part of the day, we could also make sure that we're meeting contractual operations with prep periods, lunches. So, I think it would be more like a 60 to 90, like a 90-minute time period. So, when we started diving into -- this schedule's really just a sample. We would work on that.
I always say it all impacts transportation, but also facilities. So, Jim and Lisa and I have been talking about impacts on those areas. You can see how it all gets integrated really fast in terms of execution. And in order to clean the building during the daytime, Jim would need at least two more staff members.
One of the -- oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, one of the advantages to this model is the connection between the classroom instruction and the remote instruction. So, students who come to school for the morning half could be given assignments to then do in that afternoon for their afternoon remote learning. And students who come to school in the afternoon could be given assignments to do the following morning. And then the accountability is built in because they're then going to school with that work. So, their attendance is taken care of, accountability is taken care of, and their remote platform is very different than if they're simply independently being remote the whole time. Plus, they have half of a day where they're having contact with their teacher. And a lot of what we heard, as we know from our surveys from families, was the biggest piece about remote learning is making sure kids have FaceTime with their teachers. So, this would accomplish that five days a week and then give them additional time to practice and do additional activities, exploring activities, and practice activities remotely for the other half of the day.
I had a -- Denise? So, that actually was one of my questions. But a second question I have is, as far as any funding at this time, I was listening to the governor's news conference this afternoon, and he was saying there was some money available. He was very vague about specifics, but is there any money available for additional staffing?
So, in that conference, Denise, the governor talked about the millions of dollars that he's distributed. That was distributed on the basis of the wealth of a school system. So, the millions of dollars, as it translates to Oyster River, was $39,000. So, not nearly enough to cover the extraordinary costs related with any of the models we put forward. And when we talk about operations, Sue can talk about the possibility of being able to get funds. But as I said to Sue, you know, I'm at a place where I won't believe it till it's here. And so, the $39,000 is here. That's what we can count on. Beyond that, there is additional money we may be able to get, and -- but, you know, a lot of people are going to be applying for that money, and whether we are successful or not, we'll see.
We have another --
Kenny.
Oh, Kenny. Mr. --
You can put on this slide that was just on. I had a question about that. So, just in this model, apparently where everything is remote, when the kids are in remote, there are times they're on their own, but there are times there's teacher involvement. With the remote learning here kind of split, I was wondering what that would be like for a teacher, having both a classroom running and a remote learning going? And is there need for more staff there for this model?
Yeah. So, this particular model, Kenny, actually respects the teacher's day because the remote learning doesn't involve the teacher going on the computer and doing asynchronous learning, as David alluded to. When the morning kids go home and they have activities to do, they're leaving the school with those activities to do, having been taught them in the morning. This model is very similar to the old kindergarten model, where we used to do half-days. So, this particular model is probably, overall, the best in terms of the impact on the teacher.
They may still have other contact with other teachers, though, such as encore teachers, or paraeducators, or other specialists during that remote time, who are not currently scheduled when they're in the school session. So, once you get -- once we sort of buy into fleshing the rest of these pieces out, then we can really look at numbers and staff and see where we are. Because I do think that there's still opportunities for kids in that space, just not with the classroom teacher.
Sure.
Because they'll be teaching.
Yep. And then one of the variations on this model, which tries to support one of the big cons of this model, which is the impact on families and their students, is to do a half-day model in grades two, three, and four, but to bring kindergarten and first grade full day. Our very youngest students, who need the most childcare and the most supervision, could be supported by being in the building all day. That, one, brings our kindergarteners, who have yet to experience public school, and we know how important that transition is, and establishing those routines, and the expectations of learning, and curiosity, and supporting all of the whole child. This brings them into the building all day. And then, last year's kindergarteners, whose year was interrupted by remote learning, as first graders, get to come back and be here all day. And so, this would be the same for two, three, and four. Half would come in the morning, half would come in the afternoon. For kindergarten and first grade, we would have to split them into two groups. They would be half with their teacher for part of the day, half of the day, and half with a paraeducator, doing basically that remote piece, but in-person in the school, supported by an educator. We do have the space to do that, and we have the staff that we can support that for K and 1. So, that would be a variation of Model 2.
This is also where Mastway and Moheramet's buildings are very different, and it's very possible Mastway may not have to split because our class sizes are over 900 square feet. And we have been spending time in our classrooms, physically putting tables five, four to five feet apart, to visually see what tables and desks would look like. So, this is where the buildings are different, and we will be looking for your recommendation on how married Mastway and Moheramet's implementation needs to be when we get to that point. But I think David and I agree that we're very passionate about trying to get our youngest learners in the building as much as possible in order to give them an optimal opportunity to access their education.
And then the last column of the grid that you saw, of course, is remote. And this is not, by any means, an established schedule at all. It is an example of what we could provide for a full remote learning would be consistent expectations at each grade level. The expectations for kindergarteners, of course, are very different than the expectations for fourth graders, but especially based on all of the really wonderful comments that we received from our community, we know that consistency within a grade level is important, and expectations for how often students would be seeing an adult on the screen, how often they would be interacting with their classmates or their teacher, what kind of learning blocks they would have. We would be working to create a very robust remote platform with clear expectations for families at each grade level. Denise?
This is a question about the remote learning in the spring in terms of how many children, would you say? And I know that teachers work very hard to continue to engage children and families, but I guess I'm trying to get a sense of how many families sort of drifted away, or just, you know, very obviously struggled with the remote learning. If you -- just maybe a percentage, or some sense of what that was like.
It's hard for me to give you a percentage, Denise, but I can say with confidence that our classroom teachers, our grade-level teams, our counselors, our school psychologists, we met on a weekly basis to make sure that we were checking in with families, offering extra support as needed. We did lean on our MTSS system to make sure that our students, who were not under that umbrella of special education, but were at risk academically, or socially, or emotionally, or behaviorally, that we were making sure that supports were in place for the Tier 2 and Tier 3 students. That brings me to another consideration that David and I have talked about, is regardless of which model the board recommends that we focus on moving forward, it may -- I think it's important for us to think about targeted groups that we may want to phase in as we continue in through the school year. Because those type of students, whether that's special education, those MTSS Tier 2 and Tier 3 students, really are students of our greatest concern, which I think is where your question stems from. We would want to have in the building as much as possible also.
That might be a good transition for Catherine to speak to how she would do targeted instruction in any of these models.
Yeah. I mean, in any of these models, we would want to look at small groups of students and if we're in a fully remote setting, for example, looking at groups of students that we could still provide in-person services to, and how could we do that? And how could we keep the cohort small? We wouldn't be able to do it for all services because then you start introducing too many students, too many adults to too many groups. But there's a way to support students in school with some adult support, and then they can access remote services. So, in the remote setting, kids were accessing their remote services pretty independently or with the help from their parents. If we flip it a little bit and bring them in in small groups, they could have adult support to access those services. So, they might have a paraeducator next to them, helping them to access speech and language or direct instruction. So, it helps with that engagement piece and more of that hands-on piece. Because, you know, our speech pathologist could interact with anywhere around 40 kids in a given day or given couple days. So, they interact with a lot of different kids. Cohorts are not as controlled as a classroom cohort. If we are, of course, you know, in an AM PM kind of model, we certainly would work within that as well, in terms of what students can have services in a remote setting, again, with support, and which students can have services while they're in program. What we want to make sure that we honor, though, is that when kids are getting instruction from their classroom teacher, they are there and present for that because that is very important. And I think as we look at our MTSS model that we have successfully really put in place, all kids are going to need some level of targeted instruction, whether it's continued enrichment, continued development, or targeted areas that they need some more specific support in. And then, if we're fully traditional, again, if we're all in, we'll have some other considerations for how we serve as students, and again, making sure those cohorts are limited, and perhaps how we're providing some of those itinerant services. Because we're going to have adults that are going to have, again, their contact pool is bigger than a classroom teacher. So, we have to figure out how to limit some of that so they're not interacting with 40 different kids over a given period of time. It'll put them more at risk.
I have a question for you. So, you know, reading the letters that we got, irrespective, except if you pick Model 3, if any of the other models, there's a certain group of parents, the parent is immunocompromised, the child has some kind of health problem, they're at risk. There's a percentage that's going to say, we cannot go into the school. And so, the question is, how do you, say, if you pick the half-day schedule like that, how do you address that group that's going to have to go remote?
So, we've been talking about that, and I think we need better numbers on that to see if we can successfully support that. Because if we have teachers teaching all day, then they're not going to have time to do the same thing remotely. Is there a way some of those kids can stream in at times? That's something that we're also trying to figure out, either synchronous times that kids can stream into that looks different than it did in the spring. Again, the older the student, the more independent the student, the more accessible. So, we have to look at sort of equitable solutions for that. We have a few kids right now who are receiving some in-person instruction, but they're just one-to-one, and they're accessing everything else with the support of an adult. Everything else is remotely. So, would those families, you know, look at a model like that? But I think that's a bigger question that Jim talks about every day.
So, I think the other side of that, Al, is how many faculty and how many support staff are going to be in a situation where they cannot come back to work. So, I sent out a survey connecting it to the CDC. These are the conditions that could aggravate if COVID-19 impacted your life. Immune deficiency is a good example. So, right now, I sent it out last week, and Teresa Coria, our HR person, has 40 appointments to meet with staff who want to talk about their particular health concerns. Not, "I don't want to come back to work." "I can't come back to work" is different than "I don't want to." And so, I will give credit where it's due. Our union, Guild Union President Janet Martel, worked with me to put together this letter. And why was it important for her to work with me? Because legally, I have no business asking people that question. That is privileged information. And so, we had to put it in such a way that it would be helpful to us and our planning if you would be willing to sit down with the HR coordinator and talk about your circumstance. And so, that's happening as we speak. So, we have children who have, are impacted health-wise, and we have grown-ups who are impacted health-wise. And so, that's the information we're trying to collect as we're sitting here. We should have a better handle on it. I think I gave a -- I asked people to get their stuff in by July 24th. So, we'll have a better handle on it by the time we workshop again and by the time we have the August 5th meeting. But that's a big issue because if you go back to the models that David and Misty have shared and the comments that Catherine made, we need all hands on deck. We may not have all hands on deck because there may be people who legitimately cannot come back to work.
Can you flip a classroom so you have like --
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The teacher is technically remote into a --
Yeah, we talked about that.
Streaming into a classroom with a para working.
So, Al, that's exactly the mindset I've had. If I know who can't come back, and I know the children who can't come back, then we could have the models that Misty and David have shared. could have the models that Misty and David have shared, but we also could have a small subset of model where we have to deliver a program remotely. And it would require the faculty and staff who can't come back to match the needs of the children who can't come back. And so it's going to be, you know, threading a needle, but I'm still kind of optimistic that we can pull something off like that. But I tend to look through the world with rose-colored glasses. David?
I would also say, Al, that all of this brainstorming is on the mark. Of course, we should be thinking of all these things, but how those things look at kindergarten is radically different than how it looks with 15-year-olds, for example. So to have a kindergarten, you know, in the remote learning, to have a student, there are some students who can sit there by themselves and do it. Most 7-year-olds cannot. They need an adult sitting next to them to keep them on track. The person, the teacher who's on the screen cannot really deal very effectively with the behavior issue or the mind-wandering or the boredom or the whatever that's going on on the screen. And I don't mean boredom because it's not an engaging lesson, but you're sitting there and you're just interacting with a screen, and you're 7. And so these models really get impacted by what the lesson is, what the age is, and what's educationally positive, you know? And likewise, for sure, we've gotten letters from families who can't, they're not going to send their kid because of some health thing. We've also gotten letters on the exact opposite side. And, you know, really, we just want to go back to last February, and we can't do that. And so every single one of these models is going to impact a whole host of families in a way that's not the best. And we are brainstorming all of these models to see which one supports the most people in the most options, in the most ways, taking into consideration variables that we don't have answers to yet, like how many families are not able to come back, how many staff are able to come back, all those sorts of things. So we're just looking at all these models and saying, the half-day model, we can do. Whether we end up doing it or not, that's a different discussion, but we can do it. The remote model, we can do. And we can do both of those exceptionally well. The full everybody-in-school model, at Mohairam, it might be physically possible, but it is scaring me to death. And at Mastway, it's right now not even physically possible in order to get kids into those groups.
And socially distanced.
And socially distanced, and health, and thinking about airflow and all those kinds of things.
Go ahead, Denise.
So I'm not sure if you, have you also considered the possibility of doing like cohorts where you bring in a group for a couple of weeks and, or that kind of thing? But I suppose in that situation, yeah, now that I'm talking about it, what is it, how is the teacher going to teach the group that's out for those couple of weeks?
And at some levels, that kind of Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, or a whole week kind of model works. But at the elementary level, because the remote learning has to be so teacher-supported to have to be able to teach, if you're, if, from the teacher perspective, if you're teaching Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, Thursday, how are you doing the remote for the students who aren't there?
Right.
So David, I want to make sure we stay true to the clock, and we want to get Bill and Jay up to talk about the middle school.
Could I just ask one question? I just want to know how you imagine social distancing with these young kids? And like, will they be all wearing masks? I'm just trying to think what, I'm just trying to visualize what this kindergarten class would look like. Because, I mean, the sense of kindergarten kids, they want to move, they want to be close, you know? And whether you're going to be in a situation where you're constantly enforcing social distancing instead of having a joyful class.
One of the, that is one of the most challenging things to think about. We don't want social distancing and mask-wearing to become discipline issues. We don't want to negatively impact kids because you took your mask off, you know, because you're 5 and 1/2 or you're 6 years old. And when we see groups that are already doing really great stuff this summer, and they're putting in as many health protocols as possible, and I'm, my, you know, my family's taking part in some of those, and then you see that it's not always 6 feet, and the masks aren't always on, and it's very challenging. And so how we're able to get 10 kids in a room to keep those distances while also still loving education is a huge question.
Part of the reason we're doing this is to be able to manage some of that stuff, in all honesty, is being able to give kids more room for movement. If you have an AM PM model, you have half your class there, so they do have a little bit of more movement. One of the wonderful, unique things about Oyster River is how we value students' learning styles and how some kids do best moving around and standing up and taking a break within their classroom. And if we are 22 kids in a classroom, we cannot honestly do that and socially distance. It's just not, it's not possible. It's not realistic. And that means those kids are going to have more behavioral issues because we can't let them move. It's going to be a problem.
The other piece, just to really quickly throw it in too, is, they haven't talked about it, but the utilization of outdoor spaces as often as possible. David had a great idea to get some, you know, tents and stuff so we could actually have outdoor spaces.
Can't find tents.
Well, David can build tents. Anyway, my point is using the outdoors is going to be a big part of what we do as often as possible.
So I really, I'm watching the clock, and I want the board to hear what's happening at the middle school and the high school. And if we don't make a transition, we're not going to get there. I just want to remind everybody that the models shown are not recommended models. They are for discussion. Bill, are you coming up?
Good evening, everyone. Jay Rashad, the principal of the middle school. And, you know, I do want to credit Bill Sullivan, who's done a lot of work, and Andrea Beneskovich, our special education director. We talk about some of these things every single day. The goal has been to create, discuss, you know, what things, potential models, what they could look like, you know, in the fall. Every day, we talk about some of our challenges, and I'll just go through some of them. I know the print's very small. Various class sizes at the middle school. Bill and I and Andrea have actually been measuring classrooms, particularly up on the third floor, to see how many desks we could potentially get into some of these classrooms. Typically, the third floor has been where 5th graders are, and we're looking at other classrooms where we could potentially move the 5th grade to other locations. Students, again, pre-March 13th, change classes frequently. We're looking at actually having cohorts of classrooms, I think that's a term Denise brought up, and teachers would move between rooms instead of kids moving throughout the hallways. Lockers are in our hallway, so that makes the hallways kind of a little bit smaller. We're looking at actually not using lockers for this upcoming year, which will be very likely, actually, the state report or the governor's report actually mentioned that today. So we'll have to look at supplies differently in terms of not having the kids have too much stuff. Currently, students and staff enter and exit really two different locations in the building, and we're looking at how can we do that differently? Maybe trying to have some multiple entrances and stagger dismissal. One of the things I saw in the report, and we've talked about this too, is when students get dropped off at school, whether it be a bus or a parent drop-off or a bike, that they would not be in large groups anywhere, they would go directly to an assigned classroom. Lunch served by grade level in the cafeteria. Again, pre-March 13th, we had 160 5th graders in the caf going outside for recess. Doris Termerz and I have actually already had some discussions and talked about the potential of having lunches delivered to classroom areas. We actually experienced that when we did the Two Revs workshop, when we all were here, social distancing. The cafeteria actually placed lunches out on large tables, and staff would go out and grab it. So we're thinking about using that kind of model. No outdoor space for PE recess or just fresh air. I mean, it's good news that we're building this middle school for our school community, but that creates, like, we have no outdoor space. The construction manager, Adam, was talking about actually setting up like a location outside for the kids to kind of go outside for fresh air. And that location really isn't going to be an appropriate space, as we speak right now, for social distancing. So we've been investigating other things. Bill and I actually took a drive over to Woodridge Park. I had actually never been there before in my years here in Oyster River. And we've also reached out to the town of Durham, so they said that we could potentially use that space to get kids out and get some recess or some PE time and get some fresh air. So that's just, you know, kind of a thought. Dr. Morse has been great also talking about transportation. Maybe there's a potential that we have a bus actually at the middle school all day, and we schedule that to bring kids over to Woodridge Park to get some fresh air. These are the things we're thinking about and investigating, and we almost change our mind every single day. General thought was to have 5th and 6th graders in school every single day, and we debate that back and forth. The general thought, again, my thinking was, you know, at what point is it appropriate for kid, a student, to be home alone? We kind of felt like, you know, it'd be nice to get K-6 into the schools daily and mapping that out. We would do block scheduling for 6th graders. Some of our classrooms are large enough for adequate social distancing. Continuing to have our, like, our UA program, health, PE, art, and STEM, and that would be scheduled differently. Again, having lunch in the classrooms with minimal travel in the hallway, and we're talking about 5 and 6 right now, and teachers rotating. So for example, instead of the kids walking down to the art room or the health room, the art teacher and health teacher would go to the classroom where they're located. Again, that's a very, very different scenario than we've been used to. And then also in terms of 7th and 8th grade, it's a little bit even harder to social distance these students because they're a lot bigger. I mean, there's 8th graders who are a lot bigger and taller than me, so it's harder to spread them out. And what we're thinking and investigating in terms of having a different model where the kids would maybe come in two days a week, like a Monday and Tuesday, certain cohorts or groups, and then another cohort or group would come in on like a Thursday or Friday. Again, we want to make sure we're maintaining recommended social distancing and also giving kids support, maybe in smaller Bobcat groups if they need extra assistance, particularly when they're coming back from remote learning. Again, having teachers rotate. So for example, the math teacher would be teaching in one classroom, and the next cohort, he or she was going to teach, they'd walk across the hallway to teach math. This is a middle school schedule, the things we're talking about, like a hybrid return to school. What 5th and 6th graders would do is, again, ideally, maybe they'd come in four days a week, you know, kind of got this idea from David and Misty. Wednesday would be, you know, a relearning day, but also give the custodial staff and facilities time to sanitize classrooms and clean the building out. 7th and 8th grade teachers would meet with a teacher at least, you know, once a week in a block-type schedule. An example I would give you, maybe on a Monday, you meet with your language arts and science teacher and your UA teacher. Then on a Tuesday, you meet with social studies and English language arts. Bobcat would meet in smaller groups as well. Music is obviously very different. I've been collaborating with our music teachers in terms of, essentially, we really can't do band inside the school because of particularly the wind instruments. We're thinking we might be able to do strings, continue to do that because there's no, you know, blowing into instruments. And it's very clear currently with the current guidelines, we cannot do chorus. So we're thinking about integrating those music teachers, so I can, they can help in other content areas or support. Some of the things.
Sorry, Jay, could you go, could you just go back? Because I'm trying to get the distinction between this model and the previous model, okay? The previous model, 5th and 6th go every day, right?
That's something we've been thinking about and discussing.
Okay, and this one, I'm just trying to get clear. This one, the 5th and 6th go four days out of five, and the 7th and 8th go how many days, how many days are in this school?
Two days, Tom.
Two days.
Yeah.
So it's similar to the previous one, right?
Yeah, similar.
Okay. Because the previous one's also kind of a hybrid too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, things we talked about, you know, also wanting to reduce screen time for students to try to each classroom, particularly if in a remote model, like just 30 minutes a day, and I'll show you that schedule. You know, we'll have an expectation that synchronous classes are expected. That's something we really didn't talk about when we left on March 13th. Some teachers did a very successful job with that. But again, it's not something that we talked about, so that would be an expectation that kids get to see their teachers, no matter what model they're in. And also, we've collaborated with Suzanne. We want to make sure our schedule is very similar to the high school, not exact because our program is different. But if we start hybrid or in school, we go to remote, we want it to be a fairly good transition for parents and particularly our students. This is the last schedule, and I'd be more than happy to send these slides along to you if anyone has any questions. But again, you know, a remote learning model, that's what it would look like. Again, this would be with the kids not in school, you know, trying to limit the screen time, but also having staff from like near the end of the day open for office hours. So if a student had any questions or concerns what happened during that day, the teachers would be available, again, from like 8:00, 10:00 in the morning until like 2:30 every single day.
So questions related to the middle school? Dan?
So you, at the outset, you mentioned, obviously, we know very well, the middle school physical plant has limitations even under normal circumstances.
Right.
The narrow, you mentioned limiting traffic in the hallways, they're so narrow.
Yeah.
And in the undersized classrooms. So you mentioned lockers, and that seems like a, you know, a good precaution to eliminate use of lockers. And maybe, Jim, this is a good question for you. Given that there's a finite period of time that we're actually going to be using the middle school, could the lockers be removed to expand the space in the hallways?
Right.
I mean, who knows, right?
I've thought about that too, Dan, and, you know, it pains me to say that because one of the greatest rites of passage for an incoming 5th grader is to get their own locker.
Yeah.
So for me, even to have to tell, you know, that incoming class that they're not going to have a locker, I mean, I think definitely we can investigate for this year, removing them, but.
And I guess.
And I just, that's my, you know, tired of me to talk about that because, again, it's like, that's one of the most exciting things for incoming 5th graders to have, is a locker. Obviously, we're not going to do it for the fall, but.
Well, I mean, if you're looking at having that 5th grader continue remote learning versus finding some way to ensure social distancing, then I think the locker becomes a pretty minor issue.
Yeah.
And then even expanding that sort of to, you know, there's a lot of sort of antiquated countertops and shelving and this sort of thing in the building. Is it perhaps worth removing some of it if it's feasible to, again, gain some of that space that we lack?
Yeah.
So these are just thoughts. I don't know.
One of the things, too, we've talked a lot about and investigated is like Bill and I in classrooms where we have some teachers, it's not a criticism, who've been there quite some time and have accumulated a lot of stuff in this, you know, certain table arrangements and things like that, like can some of these things been, be removed? And so we, you know, gave additional space in classrooms to look at.
There's going to have to be so much time spent cleaning.
Right.
The less there's sort of clutter, the perhaps more efficient that process can be.
Right.
And if it's a matter of saving time during the school day, let's say there's the split schedule or something like that.
Right.
Then, you know, maybe the custodians have an easier time and can more efficiently get through that process and thereby, you know, secure more time for classroom learning. I don't know, but.
Yeah, but again, we're looking at those things. We meet with, we were meeting with custodians today, looking at some of those situations where things we would ideally like to have removed, more space.
Kenny has a comment, okay? Kenny?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Kenny.
Kenny, I think I thank you for all the work that went into it. The question is similar to what we talked about with elementary school, is what would happen to children with families that are not to send their child back to school? And raise that in kind of thinking about kids who, you guys, were between 7, between 6 and 7 and 7 and 8, and it should be two kind of different behavioral skills? And why sometimes the kids are more like 4th graders? And I think if they're in the classroom all day, you know, four days or five days a week, what that experience would be like? And we know about the ventilation problems in the school, and I guess I'm worried that we are going to have our good and bad families opting out of being in a middle school. And what kind of plans we make to have for those families?
So, you know, I think that's the million-dollar question, Kenny, and that really boils down to the staff. down to the staff availability. So that's, really goes back to the question that I was asking staff this past week is who can, who can return and who can't return based on their health needs. If we have a good number of staff who can't, we can turn them right into remote teachers for students who stay home, but we need to have that answer before August 5th. So I can, right now, I cannot answer that question, but it's definitely one that I've kept on the front burner right along and that's really what's motivating me to figure out how many adults really can't come back to work. And then, you know, again, working with the guild, we know that if that happens, we'd have different teaching assignments for people than what they would have experienced had they, had they come to school. So it's a big, big question and one that will take us several more weeks to be able to answer. And the answer might be, we can't do anything because we don't have the staffing to do it and people do turn into homeschooled students. But I've been fighting that right from the very beginning because I really don't want a whole bunch of homeschooled students based on the fact that they can't come into a schoolhouse as opposed to they have a philosophical reason they want to homeschool children. So that is the big, big, big million dollar question, Kenny. Will we be in a position to help families who choose not to come to school if we have school?
And Jay, you can also mirror some of what the elementary discussed in terms of a potential AM, PM kind of day. Where you're reducing the class size again because of the ventilation issues and because of potential ventilation issues and because of the class sizes. You can also look at a model where kids are in a couple days a week, half the class.
Yeah.
So fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, they're in half, you know, Monday, Tuesday, the other, you know, that kind of thing where again, you're reducing the class size so that there is more space and ability to move.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And I know that you guys have talked about that as well similarly to elementary.
So you know, David and Misty brought up the issue of the difference between the two facilities and by comparison, the middle school has so many obstacles in relation to us bringing kids back. I think Dan alluded to them. And so this, this is our problematic building in terms of thinking through what we can do.
Al?
So I, when I looked at that, particularly when you go back to your hybrid model, so the fifth and sixth are going to be going full day, four days a week, right?
Potentially, Al, yes.
Okay, so the problem I have actually is that it goes back to the building is an old building that's poorly ventilated and four days a week, we're going to put 75% of the students in there. So I think it's, I don't, I think there's too many students in that building to be a workable model. And when I look at it, like the middle school is probably the farthest along on one-on-one technology of any buildings. And so it's in the best position to actually do the hybrid. So, and the other thing I didn't like on that schedule is you wouldn't want to do, like say, fifth grade, you go Monday, Tuesday, and then others go Thursday. That's just too long a span. You'd want to go Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday.
Okay.
So that's a better setup. But I just think that we're going to have to have them back. You can't have that high a percentage of students in that building. I think we're, I mean, I could see doing the fifth, sixth, half day and maybe do the seventh, eighth, a half day so that, again, reduce the number down.
Right.
That's just my two cents.
I appreciate the suggestion.
Denise?
And I guess, I was just curious if you thought about, because one of the biggest concerns I have for full remote, again, is children that are just in situations where it just doesn't work for them at all. And wondering if, even if you had, you know, mostly all remote, like worst case and it had to go to that, have you considered having a possible, like, you know, I don't know, a couple classes or a class or something for not necessarily special needs children, but those, you know, MTSS tier two, tier three, being able to bring them in in some capacity? Because I do know, not necessarily in this district, but I do know of, of children that went, particularly one sixth grader I'm thinking of, went from an honor student to barely, barely passing in the remote. I mean, it was just so difficult in her situation. And, you know, I know there's so many obstacles, but I'm just wondering if you have considered that as one of the possibilities, that even going full remote, somehow you would be bringing children into the building who don't necessarily have IEPs but have high needs.
Those are those kids that we talked about in our MTSS model, so the multi-tiered systems of support. Every time we say that, we're talking about our systems of how we support all students and, and we do identify students through that model that need additional support, whether it's social, emotional learning or whether it's academic. So we have, our strategic plan has been guiding our work with that and each building has been doing really amazing work with that. And that's how we were able to provide students with extra support during remote learning as well was many students were not, they did not have IEPs that got some support through the remote instruction. We, we put particular adults in charge of different groups of students to be checking in with them, whether through an advisory type model. We had counselors seeing more kids than typically we do and then we had pair educators who saw more students than they typically do, just so that we were touching base with more kids.
And I do want to reinforce, Denise, you're absolutely right. There were children who were not successful in remote learning and part of what we learned in the survey from parents is my child does not learn well in this kind of structure. And so the idea that David and Misty and Jay and Catherine have brought up here is called targeted assistance. It's not about whether they're special ed and not special ed, it's about whether they're successful or not successful. And we had, you know, quite a number of kids, much higher than usual, when Suzanne comes up, that struggled in the high school. And, you know, targeted assistance has been what we've been talking about K through 12.
Getting us about being a reflection of what the student needs are in terms of, I could envision where some families or we learn as a team that some students need to be in school much more frequently or maybe daily due to their needs and we'll do our best to make sure we make accommodations for that.
So is it fair to say that I don't see in any of these models fully bringing back all of the middle school kids for five days? That that's pretty much-
That's correct. I mean, when you look at our spaces, I don't think we could do it safely for staff and students.
And so like Al was saying, three quarters might be too much or a half might be more reasonable. So, I mean, I think that gives a parameter of kind of what we're working in.
Yeah.
Essentially, the traditional model, in-school model is, we think it's going to be unworkable given the situation we're dealing with.
Particularly at the middle school, yes.
Okay.
I think so.
Further questions in the middle school?
Thank you.
Suzanne?
So the high school is, is unique. It's, it's sort of a continuation of the seventh and eighth grade and some of the unique challenges that we have. The goal really in any of the models that we're going to look at and consider is to make sure that we're providing a safe and equitable learning experience for the students that are both rigorous and engaging. And when we think about the different models at the high school level, one of the things that the administrative team and the task force has really talked about is how to ground that in really what we value in the high school. And that brings us back to the vision and the mission of the school. So the different models that you'll look at, we've tried to ground those models in this, in these ideas and thoughts. So the first model really is about bringing all the kids back, but not all at the same time. So on any given day, we could have approximately 1,000 people in the building and if we want to consider socially distancing, we can't, I don't see that as a possibility to have all 1,000 people in the building and continue to, and socially distance at three to six feet. So what we would do is we would create a model that we would have 50% of the population of students in two days a week and 50% of the population in the other two days a week. And I'll show you what the schedule will look like in a minute. But what I'd like to do is just go back to some of the benefits and the challenges with this type of a model. Equity is always, is always a challenge, but I feel that it's beneficial to have the kids in the building as David and Misty brought up with concerns of equity. In-person, in-time monitoring of student learning and growth. When students are in the building, this is a little bit easier for us. Obviously SEL and mental health supports. Human connection is something that we've heard over and over and over again from the students and the faculty and school community. Challenges with this really has to do with the way the high school functions, creating cohorts and socially distancing and also the cleaning spaces and materials. So because we have an elective-based model at the high school, the students are moving in a way that makes it difficult for us to cohort. It's very much like a college or university where you're signing up for a course and different populations of kids are entering those classes throughout the day. So our cohorts would be quite large. We were talking about the 50% of students and then if we needed to do any sort of tracking or identifying students who have had contact with each other, we'd have to go through schedules to be able to figure that out. The lunch, lunchroom is a challenge for us. We would probably have, and I'll show you the, the model, we would look at having lunch divided, so the 50% of the population would be divided into two lunches and we would have the kids spread out. We would utilize the NPR as well as the cafeteria. Hallways, our hallways range in size from 12 feet at the, at the widest point to eight feet at the narrowest point. The majority of the hallways are around eight feet. So we'd have to put lines in the middle of the hallways, stairwells would be single directional, things like that. Class size, that is also a challenge. If we have 50% of the population in, we would look at doing it alphabetically as opposed to by grade level. Some of the thinking behind that is because of classes that are primarily freshman classes, those classes are relatively large and if we had it by class, then we would be looking at possibly accommodating 45 to 60 kids in a phys ed class in the gymnasium. If it's a rainy day, they would be inside. So that, that allows for some of that. Also cohorting, if we keep family groups together, then that also helps with cohorting, so alphabetically. We could look at other models though by bringing in by grade level. That's also an option that we've talked about. Arrivals and dismissals, these are all sort of challenges. We would have to have kids, as Jay said, when they arrive, they go straight to the classroom. And for dismissals, it would be more of an elementary school model where we would dismiss kids by bus number, by walkers, by, so to sort of make, to sort of stretch that out. Cleaning spaces and materials is a challenge. Kids are moving. They'd be moving every period. Different kids would be coming into different classrooms, even if it is at 50%. So the cleaning, that would be something we would have to really look at, how would we do that? And faculty and students that don't return, so this is, this is staff-dependent model. Our staff, we have faculty that are very specific in their area. So for instance, we have Mr. Troy who teaches our tech ed classes and we have Mr. Rashardi who teaches our culinary classes. Mr. Tebow teaches all the physics classes. So we have some teachers that are very, so depending on what that looks like, it may shift our model a little bit. And that would be something that we can't really address or talk about until we have more information. And then also, we would want to make sure that we are creating this robust and engaging curriculum for both models so that we can shift into, if we needed to shift into a fully remote system at some point, that we would have the, we'd be able to do that in a fluid way. So we would make sure Schoology is fully, fully utilized and accessed by all the students and faculty. We would really look at how we're utilizing Power School. We would train all the kids on Teams. And that first few weeks of school, it would be really important to talk to the kids about all of these different programs and what it would look like if we did have to shift into that remote model. What are the supports that are available? How you access people? How do you email? Just something as basic as that, that we all take for granted, but generationally, high school kids don't email each other, they Snapchat and they do other, other ways of communication. So really, that's what we're talking about. It would look like, this is an example of what a bell schedule could look like, we would utilize the same bell schedule if we were in a fully remote so that, and one of the things that Michael brought up last time is what about that transition if we have to move between models? So whatever our schedule would look like, we would want to ensure that we would keep a similar schedule whether we're in the building or whether we're remote. And that, we feel, would be beneficial for kids and for faculty, especially because making that transition can be really challenging. So we want to keep as much, as much as we possibly can the same. So classes would be in alternating days. I'll talk about what the week would look like, because Al, you brought that up, the week, what the week would look like for 50% per day, and I have a slide for that. Classes are blocks of time, they're approximately 80 minutes. And what we would do is for lunch, half of that 50% that's in the building would go to lunch, the other half would go to their advisory and then we would flip it. And that would give us the ability to spread kids out throughout, for lunch and also, would also give us the ability to provide the advisory programming that we have. If we were in a fully remote model with this type of schedule, then that full hour for lunch would be the lunchtime and advisory would shift over to where the flex time is, which is a similar, and it would be divided in half where it would be office hours and advisory. And that really, we created the schedule, we actually had lunch in a different location and I've been meeting with students throughout, you know, probably had three meetings right now with students and we talked a little bit about the schedule and the kids said, no, two 80-minute periods in a row is plenty enough, please don't give us three. So we shifted lunch and moved it to where it is. So the kids have really helped give us some feedback about some of these different models. They're a great resource for us. So during the week, this is what it would look like. So, so I'm going to do my best to kind of explain this and stop me if, if you have any questions. So we would have blue days, which would be a blue day one and a blue day two. So on the first blue day, you would have A, B, you would have A, C, F lunch and E periods. 50% of the kids would be coming in and that 50% would be the day one kids. They would be fully in synchronous learning in the building throughout the day following the schedule. The other 50%, which is really the day two kids, they would be at home in remote instruction. And then we would flip it for the following day. So the kids that were in school on Monday are now fully remote on Tuesday and the kids that were fully remote on Monday are now in the building for synchronous, for in-person learning on Tuesday. Wednesday, we would invite the ninth grade to come in for some programming to help transition the ninth grade and that would, we would make sure that they stayed within their divided alphabetical cohort because we don't want to mix the cohorts. So that's something that we would look at. That program could be programming. We've talked about academic integrity programming, we've talked about executive functioning skills, we've talked about SEL and counseling being a part of that programming. So it would look different. This is also a day on Wednesday where we may bring the seniors in because they have SAT testing or the juniors in for PSAT testing or other cohorts or groups of kids that need to come into the building for a variety of different reasons would be Wednesday. And then it's very similar to what Friday looked like, but in a, last spring, but in a hybrid model. And then Thursday and Friday, we would just have the other periods, Thursday and Friday. So kids would be in two days a week, they would see their teachers one day, but they would be accessing their curriculum every day. Does anyone have any questions about that? And then again, circle, special circumstances may incline us to bring additional students in. Catherine spoke about that. We're talking about students that are maybe tier two, tier three, MTSS or, or students that have special services that they need to access. And we would look at how we would cohort those kids and make sure that those kids were receiving the support that they needed to. So a second model would be to have remote learning for, as the primary mode, but then to bring in those targeted populations to campus. So again, equity, this would help with equity because we could identify the students that need those additional supports and bring them into the building. SEL, mental health, same, same thing. Again, we're identifying students that need to come into the building. It provides human connection for those students that need it. Cohorting and cleaning and social distancing, this would make, this type of model would actually make it easier for us with those types of things because we'd be bringing fewer students in. And really, we would be focusing on creating that robust, engaging, remote curriculum and utilizing the information that we gathered in the spring of last year to help us to do that. And the challenges really come with the faculty being able to make adjustments. That's a challenge no matter what, what we're in as far- That's a challenge, no matter what we're in as far as what model we utilize. A challenge would be creating that school community. I talked to a group of students this last week, I mean, it's all blending together. This week, actually, it was on Monday, I believe, about how do we create a school community if we're, if we're in remote? How do we create that positive culture? And what are some things that we could do? And they had some ideas. It was great to talk to them about that. Denise?
I'm wondering about students that attend the programming at the, like Dover High School, Spalding, the tech programs. Has there been discussion, you know, among the schools, how that will work?
Yes, so I've been talking to the principals, and we actually are scheduling a meeting to talk about, about that. We don't, there's no decisions that have been made in any district regarding exactly what their model is going to be, so it's difficult to talk about the specifics of that. But there are a variety of different things that we could do to try to allow those students to access those programs if, in fact, those programs are occurring in person.
As a follow-up, do you have a sense of how many students signed up that would be attending?
Yep. So we have probably close to 60 students. The majority of the students are going to Dover. There's a small number of students going to Summersworth and Rochester. It's even a smaller, there's four students going, from memory, I'm pulling from memory. I think it's four students going to Rochester, I think 11 students to Summersworth, and then the rest are going, going to Dover. And there's, you know, there's a variety of things that we can do if they are having in-person CTE programs that we could do to support the kids if they want to access that in cohort with the other school. But that's something that we are in the progress of talking to other schools about. And then, yeah.
Suzanne?
Yep.
I'm sorry. I'd just like, I'd like to get a sense of the number of students you would imagine coming into the building. Say, if you have, say, 800 students total, what percentage of that would be, would be coming into the building on any?
This is a 50% model, so we, right now, we have 848 students registered, so we're talking approximately 800, I'm sorry, 420 students coming into the building.
Coming in on this model?
Not in this, not in the remote and targeted.
Okay, my question is, in remote and targeted model, I'm just, I know you, I know I'm asking you a guess, but are we talking like bringing 50 kids, 60, 80, 200? I mean, just?
So in our work in the spring with MTSS and faculty, I would say there's probably, and this is just a guesstimate, but maybe 50-ish kids, I'm going to say.
Uh-huh.
I mean, it's really hard, it's hard to say exactly. And that's what we would need to do, is we really need to create, one of the challenges of this is to create that structure and the protocol to be able to determine who's coming in.
Okay.
And that would be something that special education would have to do on their end, MTSS, and the counselors and the teachers, we would have to figure out on that end. And then we'd, then we'd look at it. And 50 is really just coming to mind, because I'm trying to go through, like attendance, some challenges we had with student engagement, as well as some of our students that have high need.
Could be more to start, too. I envision, you know, some kids needing some more targeted support to begin and to get that additional support from like, it's almost like a study-work group, if you will. And as they become more comfortable, they may not need to be coming in as for many sessions, or they might need to check in once a week versus three times a week, or whatever we kind of set up. But I do envision a greater number of students, and then probably as we go, there'll be some who feel okay with not coming in as often.
But even if you threw it like that, say, say, threw it up to 100, that would still mean that seven-eighths of the students would be full-time.
Yes.
I had a kind of related question to that. Whether that, in terms of how these decisions are made, how one decision might affect, you know, the decision at the middle school might affect the decision at the high school. Because I could imagine if at the middle school, they were going in two days a week and they were like, felt like they were a part of the middle school, and the high school went to a remote model, whether that people, students in the high school would feel like they've been deprived of something that the other students are getting, like a sense of community, and, you know, I just wonder if that's?
So that's, that's why we've had Suzanne and Jay, and Jay and the elementary principals working together. We wouldn't create completely different models, you know, at each of the levels, like one model going completely remote and another model, you know, going half-time. Suzanne and Jay have been working closely. The model that probably would look different because of the age of the kids is the elementary model. We'd have more time in at the elementary model and less time in, in the presentations tonight, seven through 12. But there would be deliberateness to it. It wouldn't be random.
Okay.
Well, I mean, my comment on that is, the real thing, the trick, is providing consistency in an inconsistent world. So it's like, whether you're remote or you're in school, the structure of the schedule has to remain the same. I think that was the real problem we had in the spring, and suddenly it became structureless. And even when you were commenting, like, what day was that that I was doing that? It's like time, COVID time loses structure, and it's really difficult to get things done. And so I think, you know, whether you're in elementary or middle or high school, that consistency of the schedule, whether you're remote or in the classroom, is so paramount.
And that's one of, I agree, that's one of the things that we strive to do as a task force, is to think about how can we create a schedule that can shift and change regardless of what model we're in. And we talked about today, we had another task force meeting, and we talked a little bit about that. We went over this and talked some more about what that would look like as we shifted, if we needed to shift. So the third model is fully remote. Again, I mean, some of the, some of this is, you're seeing the same things over and over again. Challenges for the fully remote model, we know what they are. We were in that. And equity, making sure that there's supports for kids for social, emotional, mental health, you know, human contact and connection, that was something that the kids are continually saying they want the synchronous, they want to be able to connect. And so we would have to talk with faculty about that, what that looks like, and creating some consistency for kids and for classes about, about the synchronous piece and asynchronous. And also making that, that lack of in-person, in-time monitoring of students' growth and learning, how, you know, that's definitely a challenge. It's something that we worked on through the spring, and I think that MTSS and some of the other things that we tried over the springtime, we'd bring them back and really examine them and look at them and say, what worked? What didn't work? How can we improve this? That's, Denise?
It just reminded me of a question about the grading in the spring. How many students opted to have grades for their?
I don't, I don't have the exact numbers. I can get that for you if you would like. I don't have the exact numbers.
I think it would be sort of helpful, because obviously, if, if there is a point at which we go fully remote and talking about how the grading, you know, what, what seemed to work and what not work, so maybe that'd be something that would be good to bring for another meeting.
I think the grading piece is something we're going to have to talk about. Our grading scale, our 100-point grading scale that we, we utilize is something that we're going to have to examine, definitely.
And Suzanne's being very kind right now, but it was a literal nightmare for, because of the differentiation between pass, fail, and numeric grades. It went on after the school year. The only people can enter grades are teachers. Administration can't do it, and, and that's by law. So the teachers were continuously calculating whatever the parent asked them to do well past the end of the school year. So we do need to come back and revisit that.
And then I also just want to say, this is fluid, right? So we know that whatever we, whatever we decide, we could start 50% in and spend, and so, and then you have to shift to a remote model or shift to the second model. I mean, it could be anything. So this is just me acknowledging that I understand it's fluid. I understand it's changing. If we do come in and start with a 50% model, we are going to spend the first few weeks of school really getting the kids ready for the possibility that we may go fully remote at some time. So we're really going to focus on Schoology, we're going to focus on Teams, Power School, email, digital citizenry, academic integrity. We're going to talk about different types of executive functioning skills that may be beneficial to them, how to manage their time, those types of things. And also different supports that are available to them, making sure they know who the people are, how to access them, and how to use flex time. How do you use office hours? What are the types of things that you need to use it for? So those are the, regardless of what happens those first two weeks, I think it's really important to ground students in that and give them those, that information and those skills that they need so that they can be successful.
So I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Jay, because it seems to me that you're saying, and maybe specifically did say, that the option of all-in with every student coming back five days a week is pretty much unworkable.
Well, it's not that it's unworkable. I just want people to realize that we would not be able to cohort because of the elective-based model, and we would not be able to guarantee, would not guarantee, because we can't guarantee. But we would, the idea of social distancing, 1,000 people in this building is, would be very, very challenging.
Would not be possible.
Yeah.
So we can bring the kids back, but if we're going to try to adhere to the safety regulations that the CDC has or the AAP has, every building has its challenges. The classrooms were not designed in such a way that social distancing was easy. Where Suzanne, she has actually better advantages than Jay, because she has the multipurpose room, she has this library, she has the cafeteria, so, and she, so she can spread kids out, but she can't spread kids out enough to meet the six-foot criteria. And then the three-foot, and I just want to emphasize the three-foot, based on the AAP model, requires masks. That was unclear in the governor's presentation this afternoon on the news, but it's in the report that he was quoting. So if you're going to try to create a three-foot distance, you have to have masks. If you don't have masks, then you have to keep six feet, and that shuts us out of bringing any of the schools in. So we can bring all the kids in.
I'm not advocating, I'm just.
Yeah, I just want to make the community knows that we can do that, but we would not be able to meet the safety and health guidelines.
And when the bell, I think it's hard to visualize if you're not in the building every day, what it's like, but in the morning, there's going to be around 850 kids and around 150-ish adults coming into the building at the same time. And then when the bell rings, everybody exits those classrooms at exactly the same time. So as with Jay, when he mentioned too, the lockers, we're not going to have lockers, because that promotes the gathering, the grouping and the gathering. And one of the things we need to do is keep kids moving and keep it fluid through the, through the hallways and not have things that promote that gathering. So.
The other thing I think that, you know, is important in this discussion is, you know, each school system in our region is going to be addressing these issues uniquely to their buildings. So, you know, some high schools were designed for 2,000 kids, and they have 1,000 kids in them. That makes a big difference in terms of how that principal and superintendent can deal with the social distancing piece. We have a building that wasn't designed for 2,000 kids, and so, you know, at 850 kids, for all intents and purposes, the building is technically full.
And I think the other reality becomes a staffing issue when you try to then take those students and socially distance even more and break them into smaller groups. You have a staffing and supervision issue, and it becomes more of independent hangout time, which is not good use of students' time at all.
Can you go back to the schedule slide for Model 1?
Sure. This one?
The next one, please. Yeah. So in this model, each faculty member is teaching the same content on Monday and Tuesday to the, whichever section, first half, last half of the alphabet is in that day.
Yes.
So they're having to restructure their curriculum. I mean, that's, that's true in every case, but in this case, they're structuring it so that they're, they're delivering essentially two days worth of in-class material, or prepping the students to do their, their next day remote, or their next period remote. Is that right?
So they would have to look at their curriculum in a way where they, they would have to design their curriculum and instruction in a way that, yes, that would adhere to students being in front of them for one day, and then students being at home working independently for one day. The idea, though, may not be, you know, kids that have, if I'm, if I'm here on a day one blue day and I have A period with Ms. Milliken, Mrs. Milliken, I may go home on Tuesday, but the assignment or whatever that's due may not be due until the following week, until that Monday. So I would have all week to work on it. And so that's part of that executive functioning of teaching kids how to manage their time that they have, which is, which is really challenging. It's challenging for adults, never mind for teenagers. So that's, that's an important part of this.
And on your asynchronous days as a student, what contact are you having with the school?
So they would be probably very limited. It's possible that teachers may, may make themselves available, but it would be, it would be asynchronous. We would, we would have to look at attendance and how attendance would be taken on those days for those students. So we'd have to figure that piece out. That's not in this.
Right. And so the goal here is that you end up with about half the kids, every class is about half the size it would normally be.
Yes.
But that's kind of luck of the draw, because it's based on registration, and you're not going to have exactly the first half of the alphabet or exactly an even distribution of students by names.
Yes. Yep. So what we would need to do is, if this is the model that we would like to be explored, we'd have to go more fully into it and look at the alphabet and the breakdown and determine if, what classes also would be utilized, or what classrooms are being utilized. Is this room, so our largest classrooms are generally our labs, our science labs. And if kids are sitting six feet apart from each other, we can accommodate approximately 15 students in those labs. So if we wanted to keep the students six feet apart from each other, we may need to have two classrooms that are side by side. But that means that we may need to shift that second classroom to a different room to be able to do that. So we would take, this, this takes a lot of planning to figure out how many kids are coming in, what would the numbers be like, and then how do we utilize the space in a way that we can socially distance kids, but also allow faculty to access the supplies and the things that they need for programming.
Right. Did you consider any other division models for the student body, like grade levels or something else?
We talked about, and that's a possibility. We talked about doing nine and 11, ninth grade and 11th grade, 10th grade and 12th grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. We've tried, we've talked about a lot of different things. And there's, again, there's benefits and challenges to any type of grouping that we, that we have.
How about, certain subjects are more lend themselves to being in the school versus out of the school.
Yep. And that's that model of the targeting. So we may have, we may have a targeted, we may have identified, okay, we're going to just have construction tech come in, and that group is going to meet synchronously, and that's that cohort that's going to meet, or culinary, and identify those groups. And that's that, that's that model where we're, where we're identifying targeted groups of students that would need to come in.
Yeah, and I was thinking like science, you actually had to do labs, you have to come into the school.
Yep. And we could do, we could do that. We could, we could, and we could do that, again, with the targeted groups, we could say, you know, and it could be at a two-week rotation so that, so that there's space in between, but you could have the kids going to their science class this, this week, and then you're rating that two-week rotation of time, and then they maybe, if they have the construction tech, they're coming in two weeks later for construction tech.
Or as needed by a curriculum. So you need to come in to do this lab, but you can remotely work four days around the lab.
I mean, to do the high school schedule one way, then to have to reimagine the high school schedule, I can't imagine anything more complicated than that.
How much input do we have so far on, I should know how this works, but I don't. Students have already expressed their preferences for classes for the fall?
Yes. So this master scheduling process begins in December of the previous year, so, and they register for classes in, in February. So that process, it takes a full year to go through the master scheduling process.
And when they register for classes, they're registering for a specific period class or just for a subject?
They are, they do not register for the period of class. They register for the specific class itself, and then we build the master schedule based on requests to try to meet the most number of requests possible. And we are in, right now, we are just kind of working with student schedules that have holes in them to figure out, okay, what did the computer not fill in? And it takes, it takes time. Our counselors put a lot of labor into it, and then when they leave, they, with the administration tries to finish that up.
So you're building, basically, you're trying to build a schedule based on the seven-period rotation like you would have otherwise?
Yes. Yes.
So board members, we also have directors here. We have Jim and Andy and, and the crew, Lisa and Doris. If you have other questions outside of the academic area, they're available to answer questions as well.
Yeah. I definitely wanna hear from transportation in terms of how all these, I mean, 'cause I, you know, particularly the ones that involve half-day transportation and, and just how would all of that work? And social distancing on top of it all.
Well, it's a confined space. The social distancing depends on what our guidelines are given to us for social distancing on a school bus. We've been meeting, working together about maximum number of students we should be putting on a bus. We've come up with 39, which would be three to a row. We have 13 rows in the buses. That may or may not be decided upon, but that would, our maximum with that would be three to a bus with wearing face masks. You really can't social distance much on the buses. So I'm in the process of working the roots and seeing what I can do using the information provided about half-days and students going two days a week and that. So it's.
So my question is, I mean, when I think of the bus, if there's one place I would not wanna put my kid, that's it. So it's like, the question is, could we, I know we did, we were trying to do the high school and the middle school and figure out the schedule and we sent out a survey to parents. And so the question really would be, we're gonna end up theoretically with a traffic jam because a lot of parents are gonna say, you know what, I wanna drive my kid to school or do it as the governor suggested, where you have like a carpool that you go in. So it would be extremely helpful, I think, to get a kind of handle on how many kids do you think are gonna take the bus, how many do you think are gonna drive, and how do we handle that crush of cars coming to each of the schools?
Yes.
Right. We are gonna do a couple of things. We are gonna do, we have a survey, we're in the press, we have a survey, we're in the process of putting together that will go out, which will give us general numbers. But what Lisa really needs is more specific numbers, like who is, you know, and where do they live. And so we are gonna add to the registration forms that all families have to fill out after August 1st, a series of required questions that will, similar to what we did when we planned the single run, so that we can be able to have that specificity. Because obviously, if a large number of people say they're not gonna be utilizing the buses, it creates a lot more flexibility for, for Lisa.
Correct.
So I would say that Lisa and Sue and I spent a full, almost a full day together Monday. And, you know, we played through these various scenarios and if the maximum number is basically half-capacity, we also anticipate along the lines you were talking about, Al, that this will be an unusual year and more parents will choose to transport their children themselves, that we can, we'll see the buses less, less than half-full. But, you know, if we followed the exact CDC guideline, we could only put nine children on the bus and, you know, we wouldn't be able to use the fleet effectively at all. So, I mean, that's one of the messages, and I'm going back to something Michael said at the last board meeting when we talked about doing a survey. He said, can you put the scenarios out there so the parents can be responding to specific scenarios? And this is one of those scenarios, you know, the maximum capacity of the bus is half-full. And recognizing, we think it'll be less than half-full, would you, would you transport your child on the school bus? That'll help us in, in planning over these next several weeks. Todd's alluding to the registration that parents go through where we'd ask them specifically, are you going to use the bus? But we need to get some information earlier than that in order to get our head around transportation more fully. But we think that if, if half-capacity of the bus is the maximum, then we can, we can make the bus system work based on the schedules that you saw this evening from the building principals, because we applied those against those models.
Denise?
So I am wondering, as far as the high school goes, if you did go with that model of 50%, you'd be able to give more passes for students to have their own cars? I'm just wondering, I know, 'cause parking's always been a big issue in terms of those parking passes. So I'm just, you know, as one way to sort of reduce some of the need for busing, would you foresee more students being able to drive in?
It's a great question. We're, we are going to have some new spaces as well with the building of the parking lot for students to access, so that will be beneficial. We are looking at that right now. We've delayed the parking applications until we have a little bit more information about what we're thinking about for a model, because I think it will have an impact. So yes, that is, that is very possible.
Okay. You know, I was gonna say, it was when you were figuring out who got the parking permits, and I think it wasn't in the end, the seniors kinda got in there. It seems to me under these conditions that people that carpool, especially in a small cohort, should go to the very top of the list, 'cause that's actually what we're trying to encourage now.
And I think we'll see more high school kids driving their younger siblings to school. And so that also may impact some families as far as how, when the high schoolers arrive to school and, and some of those things also, I think.
That's sort of the logic behind going nine, 11, and 10, 12, right?
Yes. One of the, one of the reasons why we talked about nine and 11 and 10 and 12 is for parking. That was.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Kenny, Scott.
Ken?
Kenny, I'm sorry.
It's not just for Lisa, I'm, I'm kinda, just kinda starting to go in here about who serves, but I have a, I have a question. What do you hear from Barrington in the way it's as nice of any impact Barrington would have on our high school?
Sure.
Other students that are talking to the jury from now?
Yeah, I mean, we actually are in really good shape in terms of the tuition students from Barrington. It keeps on creeping up over the summer and we started out in a good place, Ken. And I know that Superintendent Malice will be busing close kids in, or, you know, if they're old enough, they'll drive themselves.
Kelly, I believe, contact, can I explain?
Every, almost every day I talk to Superintendent Malice, Kenny.
Great.
Yeah. And just in terms of weekly, I'm talking to the superintendent in Dover, Rochester, and Somersworth, because those are our CTE centers. Those are natural relationships for us to be building. And Suzanne's doing the same thing. And, you know, earlier, a question was asked about CTE. There's been no decisions in any of those systems yet relating, relating to their master schedules. They're all doing the same work we're doing, trying to figure out what's best for their system. And all closing in pretty much on the same delivery date of the beginning of August so that parents can know. So as we know, we certainly will share that with the school board. The other thing I would say of the school board is, I'll have the principals deliver their PowerPoints to Wendy and Wendy will put them out so you guys can have them at home to be looking at. And, and I would encourage the school board to, you know, ask direct questions to me and, you know, through this three-week period, you know, the, we don't, we don't necessarily have all the answers. And as, as you're bouncing your questions off, it may lead us into a new direction, you know, Dan's idea, can we rip out the lockers? Quite frankly, I hadn't thought about that. I think what an atrocious wall that would look like, but it certainly would.
You don't wanna know what's behind those lockers.
Yeah. But it would definitely provide.
Maybe for our psychologists to go.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you, Doris, do you wanna talk about?
I think Ken had a question for me.
Just about.
Well, I just curious to hear, with the meal service, would it look like, can we be able to choose which are prepared meals or are you not?
So we have talked about this. Of course, we can't really finalize until we know exactly what's gonna happen, but yes, prepared meals, all prepackaged. Students would not take their own utensils, would not take their own condiments. Everything will be handed to them. High school, I think, would probably be the most normal place, but still, everything would be handed to them. We do need to do some work for staff safety. K-8 would be delivered to the classrooms, both breakfast and lunch, and snacks at the schools, at the elementary schools, if they still do that. We have just signed a contract with a new point-of-sale system, which has just created a module for pre-orders, for parent pre-orders. So because of this crisis, they got to work on that early this spring, which is another reason why I really like this company. The parent portal is not open yet. We're just starting to set that up. I actually had my first training today. But parents will be able to preorder meals for their kids, snacks, breakfast, whatever. And, you know, I think we may have to juggle some staff, maybe reassign a few, but I'm not quite sure what the menu will look like. I really want students that are in school to get some hot food, because I'm thinking they're probably getting sick of sandwiches and salads. But, you know, we'll still follow the guidelines and they'll get their grains, proteins, fruits, vegetables, and milk. We're going to stop getting the local dairy for now and go back to the eight-ounce containers for high school and middle school, which is a little unfortunate. It's kind of a step back as far as our local purchases. But because a local doesn't do an eight-ounce serving, we really don't want kids having to pour milk and I don't have the staff to do it. So other than that, repackaged, I mean, I mean packaged onsite and then delivered to the classroom, K-8. And then, middle, high school, high school, actually, choices will be a little more limited than before. We're planning on preordering deli sandwiches at both high school and middle school. NPR, we'd probably have the snacks and the pre-ordered sandwiches. The, the hot meal would be served in the cafeteria, so that would take students. And we're gonna take the a la carte snacks out, out of the kitchen so that they're not, they're just coming in for their meal, for that one. They would get the other in the other room. So not quite exactly a full plan yet, but it will be there.
Thank you, Doris.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Right.
Not, not for Doris. I was wondering if, what about sports and if we're.
Did you have a question for Doris? Go ahead, Michael.
So I wonder about, here at the high school, that seems like a lot of people, even with the reduced number of people in the building, a lot of people coming through both the NPR and the cafeteria in a half an hour. Is there a?
I, I had one high school where we served 1,000 students in one hour.
Well, I.
All at once. This doesn't scare me.
In general, for capability, I mean, in terms of distancing and not mixing students, given the environment we're in right now.
Yeah. I think we'll need help with, with the distancing as they come through, but that's the reason why taking the things out of the kitchen so that there's less for them to get there. They'll get their hot food in the kitchen and get out of there. So there won't be, you know.
I guess, I wonder about taking it a step further, and I know it will limit the options, but, but going to the same model as the middle school where lunches are delivered to that, to the classroom that they're in at that part of the day.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
So Michael's asking whether we can brown bag the lunches like we would do K through 8 at the high school.
Um, I'm not sure that would go here.
I think that's a team answer.
I mean, we can do anything that's needed.
Yeah. I mean, we, we, if you would like us to explore that, I'm happy to explore that. I mean, we, we tried very hard to keep the contract in mind and give teachers a break for 30 minutes at lunchtime. I think that it's gonna be important to give people breaks. Wearing this all day can be really challenging and just to take your mask off and to be in your own space and give yourself a break. So, so I think that that's one of the things that we kept in mind. But we definitely can explore the idea of having the students stay in the classroom and I can talk to Doris about.
Well, even if they wouldn't just stay in the classroom, whether it would be easy for Doris to prepackage the lunches and they can go into the lunchroom in smaller groups and disperse.
Yeah.
Would, what he's looking for is, is there a way to socially distance more appropriately?
Right. We're talking about, if we have 400 students here on any given day, you're talking about having 100 of them in either the cafeteria or the NPR for each lunch period. That seems like too money to me, I guess.
Yeah. Yep, we can do that. We can have the students in the classroom.
We will do whatever needs to be done. I just don't want.
Go outside.
You know, we have students that really count on these meals and we wanna make sure that they're there for everyone who needs them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Doris. Jim, maybe just a brief overview of what you see as the hurdles, facilities-wise?
Sure. Thank you, guys. I think I just wanna address both models and just two different realms. One is ventilation, which is a big topic among everybody, and the other one is custodial and how we're gonna keep up cleaning the environments. So I just wanna start with ventilation, because that's gonna be common for both hybrid and return-to-school fully model, whatever we explore. So I just wanna kinda go back and just remind everyone that we spend an absorbent amount of money on our ventilation systems over the past couple of years. Siemens, part of our yearly contract, commissions every single air handling unit, which means they go back to the factory default settings, make sure everything is running properly. We have that peace of mind. That was already done. Repairs are made timely. So that is a constant. Another one is the ventilation, like vents. Like, we spend, again, an absorbent amount of money. We're cleaning all the vents over the past couple of years. So there should be no obstruction on the inside. I gotta say that all of our units, which we have 40 of them in the district, we have 20 on this roof, we have 10 over at the middle school, and five each at the elementary schools that ventilate 100% of the building. Now, ventilation in its true sense of the word is air exchange, taking air from the outside and releasing it. Again, Siemens was up here talking about our, those energy measures that they did in the last project specifically for that. Sensors up in these units right now that say how much carbon dioxide or carbon monoxide is like being exhaled, it automatically opens up exterior louvers to bring in outside air. We get that. Our units do that. It was kind of interesting to see that we have ventilation issues, because, yes, our biggest fear is if a unit goes down totally and we can't get a part for it. That's a different issue. Our current issues are like noise, runtime. Actually, they probably run too well, 'cause our most common complaint is that it's too cold. That means that there's a lot of air moving in the room. So I just wanna put everybody peace of mind. I get a lot of guidance on this every day. I get a lot of comments about it. Who, what are we doing? Are we doing hospital-grade air filters? Just so for the people even at home listening, we are probably not going to a higher fleet, because that actually limits the integrity of the actual unit. And the more you, you stall the airflow, the more motors work, the more pumps work, and actually has a greater tendency, tendency of burning those out. The greatest guidance that we have is to do regularly changing of those air filters in order to, to keep proper airflow and to restrict that. So the big thing now is like air flushing or, or building flushes with fresh air. So we gotta be prepared that we're going to be running these units a whole lot longer, because we have to, basically doing a whole air exchange is probably gonna be equivalent of an hour before school starts and an hour after every student leaves that space. Those units are gonna be running. With the controls portions on it, we can exchange more outside air, which means that the buildings will probably be cooler, 'cause we're gonna be bringing in, in more outside air, especially during the winter months. We can expect our energy bills to go up quite significantly on that side. So the only savings for that, financially speaking, would be if we go to like a four-day model, we can essentially kinda close that, the air handling units down for that one day. So kinda wanna put people's mind at ease on that. Just for an extra measure, we're currently looking at ionization units to go inside the air handler to help clean the air a little bit better. There's a lot of talk about UV lighting and what that does. So we're, I'm exploring a lot of that stuff right now, but there's, just like my counterparts here, there's a ton of information coming at us all at one time. And I'm thankful that we have Aramark and a really strong partnership with Siemens that can give us that right guidance that actually works. So how's that for an answer for ventilation? Okay. I know, I'm gonna get that a lot. So, okay. So as far as the, yes, sir.
And that all applies to the middle school as well, right?
Correct. Yes. Actually, remember, we put in a lot of more money over at the middle school, especially with the vent cleaning in the last performance contract, to make sure that that was, that can hold up until the new school is there. So, yeah, as middle school, as old as it is and as clunky as those units are, my only concern is if they're gonna go down, we can get parts to fix them. But they do exchange outside air. So, okay. Okay, to hit custodial really quick. Again, I looked at option one as kids fully in the building across the district and what that would look like for cleaning. The greatest guidance that I received from the state, the CDC, is recommending a full cleaning happens at the end of the day. So to answer Al's question, how do you clean all the classrooms throughout the day? It's almost impossible for my staff to do unless I had an absorbent amount of day staff to really follow behind each kid. I really love hearing the idea of cohorts and keeping people as close together as possible, keeping them on a path, keeping many people in the same room. It scares me to death that people would be intermixing a lot in this school, because it's impossible for us to keep up. The more my custodians know the schedule during the day, which I intend on having one to one and a half person more during the day, the more they know that schedule, the more they're going to be comfortable following that route of the kids throughout the school. And that's really my intention with custodial, is to keep the common spaces and the bathrooms hit constantly during the day. Door handles outside bathrooms, we're going to close down and, and clean completely during the day and be there in the hallways with any type of class exchange. So that's where my mind is at when I look at during the day. Our greatest use for fully cleaning the rooms is going to be at night, and that's where I want to put all my time and energy. If we were to have five-day-a-week school like regular, I would need, like Dr. Moore said, 2.6 people in addition to fully clean those rooms. Jamie, my custodial manager and I, we actually went through every single school, took a timestamp of what it would take to clean every single room. So I just did simple math. This is how many people we have, how many hours, and this is how long it's going to take. So that's, would be the need for the additional staff. Now, hearing the other option where it may be like four days a week, or the high school doing 50%, that reduces that equation pretty dramatically. I've already talked to my custodial union, actually, Dr. Morris and I. They are willing to explore even doing like a four, 10-hour days, just to give me that extra couple hours during the day, or extra hours during that particular day, so I wouldn't have to hire additional people. I'm also scared about if one of my staff falls ill or sick, even just the general cold and is out of work, how am I going to fill that, that night when we have another influx of people? So I'm going to want to beef up my sub-list to keep up with that. What also is another big factor is any help that we can receive from an individual student or a teacher in their room. I have fully intention of outfitting every single classroom with either a spray bottle and disinfectant, that if somebody feels a little bit more paranoia or an urge to clean their space, I would like to make that available to them, to create them a peace of mind and to help us out a little bit better. Box of tissues, hand sanitizer. I can give you the math on that as well, but that's my intention of what to do in every single classroom.
So that is a good point, Jim. And so one of the issues that we've been addressing most recently is what are the unique costs associated with these models? And we've just begun, you know, structuring that. And, you know, Jim's example of if we're full in, he needs 2.6 more people to keep the buildings clean. But there's also unique PPE costs. There's just a whole host of cleaning materials. I mean, every classroom having a disinfectant cleaner and, or, and oil wipes is a cost that we've not made, you know, not had to have before. So we're trying to build a database of unique costs that we would face, regardless of which model we're in, and so that we can come back to the board and say, you know, here is what we think we'll need to operate next year with, with students and, and residents, full-time or part-time.
I think that's also important, because like when funding comes, in some cases, it's what the additional cost is for COVID, and if you can separate those costs out, it makes you in a better position to apply.
And Sue, Sue, we talked about that this week, and Sue is keeping a unique COVID purchase list, so that we can come back and, and seek reimbursement. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Kim, do you want to talk about the health, how we've approached the health issues?
So Kim Wolf, nurse at West River High School. I really just want to relay how hard we're working behind the scenes to make sure that your students are well taken care of. As you know, we have many other diagnoses other than COVID, emergencies, acute and chronic conditions. So we are behind the scenes working on how to isolate a suspected positive COVID from the rest of the population. Do you have any questions for me?
So Kim, just in terms of letting the board have a sense of it, I mean, you know, you work in the high school, so you'll have a better handle on the high school. But out of the 848 kids at the high school, how many children have health issues that would require much more attention in a COVID environment than, than they've needed in the past? What number, percentage?
Yeah, we have many immunocompromised students that, that come in. Some of them have to come in three times a day. So it's imperative that we have a designated space to isolate those students from the suspected COVID students. The symptoms for suspected COVID range from a runny nose to a cough to GI symptoms. So it's really a wide range. It'll be, you know, a tad bit more challenging to triage. So that's why we, we really want to take these extra precautions and separate the students as much as we can in the health office.
Can you give the board a sense of what nurses have talked about in terms of what they need to do in their areas to be ever vigilant?
In regards to our, our space?
Space and equipment needs.
Yeah, so the health offices by, by nature aren't huge spaces. So we are looking at ways to have students, like, speaking for the high school alone, I have kind of like a sickbay area with three beds. As it stands right now, they can't be socially distant within, within the sickbay area. So rearranging furniture, rearranging structure possibly. You know, Jim and I are in constant contact about ventilation, UV lighting, all different ways that we can, we can try to best take care of the children without cross-contamination.
And we're meeting again with, I'm meeting with the nursing department on Thursday again to review where we are at with our supply orders as well as our nursing spaces. We've had some really unique ideas on how to restructure nursing offices across the different buildings. So we're reconnecting on that and then be speaking with administrators about spaces that they will also need and maybe some retailing of some spaces. Like Kim said, furniture things, restructuring where nursing is in Moheramit because of the renovation that hasn't been completed. And then we are also working on, we have obviously the protocol that's come from the governor today, but also waiting on the Department of Health. Today, the governor's protocol basically says, if you have a COVID positive, a suspected COVID case, you're going to isolate them and you're going to call us for further direction. Well, that's not going to, we need more systematic procedures beyond what's been given to us today. Dr. Chan is supposed to be providing that to us. Kim is attending a phone call on Monday. That's for all school nurses to, to be part of that discussion with him, so that they are clear on what we need from, from our side for school nursing.
Yeah, it's all pretty broad right now, but we want to fine-tune and.
Kenny?
Get more specific.
Um, sure, Kim, the scope of our view of the caring profession in here today. Really best practice would be that we also get some routine screening of both employees and children. What we technically know about COVID is that this age has a lot of asymptomatic carriers. And that's, that's the price for, for the body, for the logic community. And so schools would have perfect access to start to screen, to see if there is an outbreak, and to take appropriate action. So I don't see how, we as a school district alone could take that such a challenge, but perhaps we're needing with the state level people, how we're going to manage to try to protect.
Yeah, that's part of the discussion around having so many students in person at once, not being able to manage that screening procedure and process effectively. We have put in place a screening procedure now that we use in our buildings for our staff who are entering, for vendors, for the small cohort of students who are attending in-person extended school year at this time. There's only a, there's less than six students who are coming in right now. But we put together screening procedures, and we're able to be working with some systems right now to see what works, what doesn't work. One of the things we've asked parents now who are participating, for example, is we have the screening questionnaire, and that needs to be completed upon entry every day. So we have to look at, can we replicate that model in, in another way? Is there a way we can do it electronically, so we're not having 200 pieces of paper every day? So those are some of the other things, Kenny, that we are talking about, that screening piece.
We, we don't really do there screening at present.
Yes.
But, you know, it's maybe we're talking about the word testing of burning s from the, to get.
Yeah, I think Kenny, I think you're kind of breaking up, Kenny, that last sentence. Could you try it again?
Sure, it's kind of time to find if there's a way of asymptomatic carriers that can start to read project, you know, for school and community.
That's exactly the fear.
Testing, not, not school, but testing.
Oh, you mean testing, can we do the, yeah, so if, if we were to do testing, that opens up a whole nother need for agency-type support to come in and do that for us, because the school nurses have to be available really to the students who need the nursing services as it is. So if we're going to look at testing, or if we're going to be supported by the Department of Public Health on that, then certainly I think we'd be open to it. But then it also comes with a whole host of parent approval with that process.
Yeah, I think you hit it right on the head, Kenny, in terms of capacity. I think that that would, if we can get support for that, that would be ideal, and we can pursue that. But go back to something that, that Jim said. If one of his people is out, you know, he's, he's kind of hung up in the cleaning business. If one of our nurses is out, we don't have anybody to replace them. So the nurses have been amazing in this process, supporting our, our plans and helping us, you know, with the health-related issues and guiding us. But we have one for each building and one who shares the buildings. So it wouldn't take much for us to lose our, our health professionals that we have onsite. I think we should pursue it, Kenny, and see what's, what we can, what we, what we might be able to achieve. But I think it's a, it's a huge issue.
I have a question related, could I just follow up, Kenny, and maybe you have a comment? Because it seems to me, one of the issues with testing is how long you have to wait for results.
Yeah.
And I actually, I was going up to Maine, so I got asymptomatic, I got a test, and it was six days. And I think that's the average. And I think if you have asymptomatic people, and you, you know, they're, even if you take a test, you have to wait six days to get the results, you, you're really kind of building, you know, danger there. And I was, I thought the governor, who said some good things this afternoon, was quite complacent about that.
Yes.
Because I think that's a real issue, that we have to put pressure to say, if you want schools open, we need a COVID test where you don't have to wait a week to get a result.
But if you're talking about proactive screening as opposed to responsive testing, more information is better than less information, even if it takes a week, even if the results lag by a week.
Yeah, but for the school, though, it's like if you have somebody for five, in essence, when you test them, you'd have to say, please don't come back until we get the results of the test.
Right.
And I know we are getting late, but I did want to give Andy a couple of seconds at the microphone. Andy, do you just kind of come up and share your thoughts related to athletics?
Yeah, I think, I think like every other athletic director in the state, I was kind of waiting for the governor or the NHIA to come out and kind of make things easy on us. That's not going to be the case. The NHIA is having sports, and it is going to be a local decision, whether schools participate or not. The last couple of days, I have been in contact with other athletic directors in schools to kind of gauge what, what their plan is. And I think, I think they're in a pretty similar situation that we're in right now. We just don't know. You know, I think certain, certain models lend itself better to athletics. I think fully remote models don't lend itself to athletics. Kind of defeats the purpose there. You know, full-in models are, are a little better for athletics. And hybrid models, there's a discussion there. So, you know, there's certainly a lot of things to, to, to take into consideration. I'm on a state task force that's been meeting regularly since this, this spring. And one of the things that we've discussed, if there is no option for interscholastic sports, are there other, is there other programming that we can offer on a local level that can incorporate some, you know, some, some skill development, mindfulness, you know, fitness, those types of things? So there's, I, I think there's, there's anything that's really on the, on the table. You know, there's certain, some schools are talking about playing varsity schedules only, not having middle school sports, having junior varsities, intramurals. There's certain, there's talk about smaller game schedules, where schools don't travel to some of the districts that may, you know, be a little bit, have a little higher cases of COVID than, than other ones do. So there is, there's everything on the table from fully playing, from, you know, and there's, you know, different sports have different challenges. There's a different challenge for, for, for football than there is golf. So it's, it's not an easy answer. It really isn't. It's, and it's tough in our, there's 70% of our kids play sports. So it is not a, a not an easy, easy topic.
So I think that we've heard from the directors and administrators, I guess, just in closing, and some comments or direction from the board?
So could you say what you would see the next meeting, the function of the next meet? We, we have another workshop scheduled, is that right? Now, what would you see as the function of that? Would that be to come back and refine these models, or just to start saying, this one looks?
I think, you know, this is the, this is the challenge that we faced right along. You know, we're trying to think through three major different delivery systems concurrently, and it puts a lot of stress on the system. But I, I don't know how to do this work without looking at all three of these models in, in detail. Because, you know, if we're going to give you information, we have to give it to you in as complete a fashion as we possibly can. And so I think what we would do between now and the, and the 30th is take these models and, and build them out to be more detailed to answer some of the questions that we couldn't answer tonight, because the models aren't built out. And then, and present those to you on the 30th. And then you'll have all the information we have at that point to be in a position to make a decision on the 5th.
Okay.
That's, that, I, I wish I could say, you know, let's just focus on one model, but I think we're doing a disservice if we, if we do that.
Denise?
I'd like to see examples of, imagine having an elementary school child, a middle school child, a high school child, and, you know, maybe see how some of these different schedules would sort of interact with each other. So I, I think I'd like to see a little bit of that type of thing.
Sure.
What's that?
Like a day in the life of elementary school or?
Or of a family even. Because I'm thinking, you know, we certainly have many families that have children in different buildings. And, you know, it's, just sitting here, hearing the schedules for the first time, it's hard for me to really think about how that would all interact. You know, I've got a high schooler going on Monday, Tuesdays. I've got a seventh grader going on, you know, this day. Or, so I, I would like to maybe see a little bit more in terms of how the different schedules would fit together with the other schools.
Can I ask a question? I am curious, though, do any of you at this point foresee us being fully in session, all students, all staff? No.
I think you answered, though. I think it, you know, I mean, as we're working.
I think it's helped for us to tease some of it out.
Yeah, I mean, this reminds me a lot like dealing with the dam. It's like you have to put everything on the table. But I think as you've gone through, you've already answered your own question. There are certain things that you can't staff or won't work. And so it would seem to me you don't focus as much attention on that and focus what you think is the most promising. promising.
So, it sounds like then if we really do a deep dive into the variations of the hybrid as well as remote, but removing the full-in, because there's a lot of logistics to that too, it sounds like we can eliminate that.
I think we have to be careful because Al is speaking for Al, he's not speaking for the board.
I thought, no, so that's why, that's why I asked the question, they were like...
But, it seems to me, I mean, I asked the question twice, and it seems to me that what I heard was basically to go back to a fully in, go back to like March 5th, and what's school like? We can't do that. We have to have some different configurations, have fewer students, because we cannot meet the guidelines for distancing if we do that, which takes a lot off the table. Then we can look at these other models. I mean, we can still look at, but that's what I've heard today.
We also expect that if we did go with that approach, there'd be a large number of families, a significant number of families that would not be sending their kids to school in, if we followed that model.
Yeah, so I think, I think that there's that. Seems to me then we can focus on these other essentially hybrid, but very, you know, that covers a lot of territory, but...
Yeah, and they, the principals presented very versions of a hybrid, but, you know, there are, the issue that Michael just addressed is the one that is driving me the craziest, which is, you know, if we have families that will not send their kids even in a hybrid, do we have the capacity to support them? The answer may be no, the answer may be maybe, or the answer may be yes, but I need these three weeks to figure that out, and I'm really, really concerned if we lose, if we go by the survey that we did in June, we would lose 20% of our student population to homeschooling. That's 400 kids. That is a massive number of kids to not be in school, recognizing that that's a choice the family made, but at the same time, can we position ourselves so we can help them?
Yeah.
I mean, I, and I'm hoping, and I've said that out loud many times, and I still don't know the answer to that, but I want to be able to assist families if we can. And that's where the teachers who stay home because of health reasons can be a big asset to us.
Okay. Denise?
I also agree with how important the K, in particular, because to try and set up a remote with children that haven't even been in school, so I appreciate somehow, you know, looking at the, particularly the K1, what you were talking about, you know, I think that some, I really worry about full remote in terms of, you know, what the achievement gap, and I hear everything that you folks are doing, and, but, you know, it still really concerns me. If we go full remote, we're going to lose a different 20%, and maybe not 20, but, you know, a significant number in my opinion.
Okay, I think that, does that give you enough for the next?
I think Dan wanted to...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't want to cut you off. Okay, no problem. So, I haven't had an opportunity to digest the most recent state guidance that came out today. Is there any clarity from the state, whether it's Department of Education or DHHS, on what guidance should be followed? Or have they simply, because I thought I heard earlier your suggestion to the effect of they've basically issued a statement saying these are local decisions. Is that where we stand with state leadership, or?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think the governor was clear that he wants kids back in school, but at the same time, the next sentence is, but these are local decisions made by, you know, local communities.
Well, and I think, I'll speak for myself, but I've not heard anyone, you know, speak strongly for remote learning. So, I think it's fair to say, at least to a large extent, that we want a resumption of normal classroom learning.
Absolutely.
The problem that we're confronted with is, you know, what guidance do we follow in building whatever model we adopt? And that's where, you know, it's disappointing that we don't have any clarity, it seems, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe I just need to understand.
No, I thought that what the governor said is pretty much, you know, where we've been. He said that each community has to figure it out, and, you know, we're not a state like Florida where the governor has the authority to say everybody's going to start school. It's not a centralized political structure we have in New Hampshire, and I think he was sending out a signal that he really hopes that people will open school up in the fall, but he also was, at the same time, saying he recognizes local conditions will impact that. So, you know, the guidance is vague, I think, on purpose because the political structure in Concord is decentralized.
Yeah, it's meant to be flexible and dynamic is the language that kept being used today, and within the document, you'll notice, you know, they states it's a one, it's not a one-size-fits-all document. It recognizes the varied local context of each school district and acknowledges that many districts may develop their own operational guidelines utilizing this document as their base of minimum requirements. So, this is meant to be minimum requirements, and so they do have recommendations for, if you're looking at cohorts, again, every principal here has talked about making that a small cohort, making it a predictable cohort, so they have those recommendations within there, you know, depending on what a school district decides and say, this is, I'm looking at remote instruction, these are the things the state is asking us to consider, this is what they want us to consider for hybrid. And it is, it is meant to be a guidance document, and it's not a direct sort of, this is going to be the best fit.
So, we can all read that between now and the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, this came out today.
Yeah, this came out today.
Put it off the presses.
Michael, you have a last comment, okay?
Sure. I think the work that Jim, you're doing on staff availability and individual staff members considerations is going to be really key to informing any of these models. I think that alone is probably a reason why a fully open model is not viable. We just don't have, we're not going to have a full staff that can be, that can be in the buildings every single day. That also leads me to, as much as it is a significant change in approach here at the high school, I think we need to look at other ways of limiting the way that students and staff mix here at the high school. And I realize that's going to be reducing the degree of student choice and offering students classes that really are not their first choice. But, I think having even 400 students in this building on a given day and having them mix essentially normally, granted with a smaller number of students, is going to be really, really difficult to manage overall. That gives me, that is the element of the hybrid model that I heard tonight that gives me the most consternation. I, we didn't talk about PPE, we kind of alluded to it a couple of times. I'm assuming that we're going to be working with a model where everybody in the school buildings is wearing a mask all the time, students, teachers, visitors, contractors, whatever.
That right now is our stance, that if you're in the building, you're going to be wearing a mask, and the, we're looking at different solutions for the K1 group, Michael, that might work. I have to have conversations with our health people and our K1 teachers and our union, mostly what, because of the, and also some of our special needs population that have respiratory issues. So, we're trying to find a solution that's different than a mask with our primary age kids along the lines of poke, poke, pull, down, up, off, wear it on one ear, you know, they're babies and they're learning, and we have to recognize that. And so, we're trying to see if we can find a different solution that would protect them.
And that's where it's not a single protective measure, right? We're taking, we're doing masking, we're doing reduced density, we're doing health screening, so these are all, these are layers, it's kind of like MTSS in a sense, it's layers of protection.
Exactly.
Nothing's going to eliminate risk.
Nothing's going to eliminate risk.
Aside from nobody ever going out of their home, ever, and that introduces other risks. So, so these are layers of, layers of protection.
Exactly.
And my, my last, my last thought is, I think we have to plan for remote, 100% remote model, and even if that's not the solution that we start the year with, there is the very real possibility that what's going on in other parts of the country happens in New England again, and we get to a point where we have to go back to a fully remote model. So, that has to be part of the planning. And also, we should be thinking about what that threshold is ahead of time. So, even if our preference is to open school on a hybrid model at the beginning of the school year, we should have in mind ahead of time, what is the threshold for where we say that's not going to work, based on what's going on in the community, and what is the threshold for where we say we need to transition to a fully remote model because of what's going on in the community? Granted, that's going to be on short notice when it does happen.
Agreed. 100%.
Yeah, and I think, Michael, that's why the middle school, high school are looking at both their hybrid and their remote schedule to be interchangeable so that they are ready to flex and carry on with the same routine, so kids at least get to stay in the same kind of, yeah, schedule and structure. So, that's one of the things that they are recognizing, because I do think once we put kids together, there'll be just normal viruses and the course of flu and strep throat and everything else that's going to hit us, that's going to make it feel like there's COVID when it's strep and other things, but...
I think the other aspect of this, along that same line, Michael, is, you know, we think we're in control, we're not in control. If the parents get afraid, they're going to pull the kids out. We could be in remote because we have to be in remote because the parents are saying we're not going to send the kids to school, and we're getting a taste of that already. If that becomes a tsunami, then we have to prepare for remote.
So, I wonder if we can conclude it right now? It's been tremendously interesting. I appreciate all the presentations, so we will meet again in, what, two weeks and a day, right?
Yep, on the 30th.
On the 30th, okay, great. Thank you all. That was good.
Well, I don't think that we've ever planned this hard in our lives.